We now come to the agenda itself and item one is apologies. Do we have any apologies?
Yes, I've received apologies from councillor Evedon and councillor Warraven.
Okay, thank you. And now we move to item number two, which is disclosure of interests. This is to deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosable, peculiar interests and interests other than peculiar interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and the Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. Are there any interests to disclose? Nope, that's the only... Now we now move to item three, which is public participation. This is to deal with any questions or brief representations from members of the public in accordance with Seaford Town Council Policy and the local authorities and police and crime panels, Coronavirus, Flexibility of Local Authority and Police and Crime Panel Meetings, England and Wales Regulations 2020. So does any member of the public wish to participate in this meeting? If so, could you either use the chat function or turn on your camera and indicate you wish to be involved? You have something to say. I don't see anybody signalling to speak. Is there anyone? I don't see any chats in the chat room. Okay, this is the second, the final opportunity. So I'm working on the basis, no one from, no one in the public gallery wishes to participate. So we move ahead to item four. This is the Covid-19 Update Report, September 2020. And we are to consider report 5120 updating the full council on the decisions and actions taken since the previous report made on the 18th of June 2020 regarding the Covid-19 crisis and associated measures put in place. This is for ratification by the full council. Now these, this refers to pages three to 10, and this is Agenda Item Report 5120. Isabel, as the officer presenting this, Isabel, is there any updates you wish to get, share with us or an introduction for this report?
Yeah, I haven't got anything in particular to draw attention to. It's just whether there's any questions. However, I've not been in this week and I know there have been some changes. So whether Georgia and Karen have anything to add at this stage in regards to the recent announcements? But to be quite honest, it's so recent, we'll probably be looking to look at things next week. So it's just whether there's any questions from the council.
Georgia, Karen?
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like me to, we had a CMT meeting on Wednesday where we discussed the changes that were announced about the, the rule of six, isn't it now? And Fraser and Simon at the golf course and Craig at the View are quite happy that that shouldn't change the way things are at the moment up there. So they'll carry on as they are unless we hear differently or unless restrictions, further restrictions are implemented. So that's one good thing, that it hasn't had an immediate impact on us. But no other updates beyond that.
But we recognise we are in a time of change again. Karen, anything to add to that?
Not at the moment, chair, no.
Okay, thank you. So the recommendations were note, were recommended that we note and ratify the decisions made and the actions taken by officers since the 18th of June 2020 meeting as a result of the Covid-19 crisis. So does anyone want to speak to this? Okay, so Dunn is the first to signal. You're still muted.
Sorry, sorry, page five, 1.16b mentions something about golf course wardens. I've never heard of that. In all the years I've lived here, I've never heard of the golf course, voluntary golf course wardens. Can somebody explain what they are?
Okay, back to the officer.
Yeah, so they are, they're actually golf club members. That's something that the golf club were in communication with the golf pro about. And they're, they're voluntary members that take it in terms to go up there in the evenings and just make sure that people have paid their green fees, basically. And they also can take green fee payments, which is why we, we were able to give them the device to be able to do so.
They're not, they're not employed by us, the councillors, to do with the, the golf membership that's up there. Oh, that's, that's what I did think that, yes.
It's no cost to us. Okay, thank you. Any other, any other, any other questions? Okay, so Olivia Honeyman?
Mr Mayor, in 1.4, on page four, just about the golf club, whether the actual view would be able to open in the evenings at all, even if it's just Friday, Saturday or Sunday, just to see how that would go to actually, because it's a, you know, good place to go and whether that's something that could actually happen.
Izzy again, I think.
Yeah, it's something that we, we have talked about and that we've been sort of closely discussing with the general manager at the View. It's something that historically hasn't actually done very well. So we, you know, it is something, it was an option to explore. But then when we looked at how much we would need to get in, in order to cover the overheads to stay open, looking back at the customer numbers even before the pandemic, it was, it was historically low and didn't, almost didn't cover costs anyway. So it was, wasn't something that was an option at this time.
Sorry, the, the Chair of Golf and the View is signalling to speak. Councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to answer that, actually. We did discuss this at Golf and the View Committee this week. And we decided to keep the opening hours as they are. It was put forward that we should open in the evenings, but quite honestly, that's just not viable. You can't hire anybody up there in the evening. You've got to employ three or four staff. And the overheads far outweigh any income that comes in the bar. So we're then, we're super free that the opening hours would stay exactly as they are at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Richard Honeyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of things on 1.22. It's, I can hardly, you can hardly say the council offices are vacant. If they were vacant, then there'd be no offices, there'd be no desks or equipment within the office. So I think that's a little bit of a, a little bit of a misnomer. And following on from that, central government, the exemption, six for six rule, six people's rule is always exempt for office space. So if you've got no, no indication at all when you may be going back, because obviously workplaces are exempt. There's two items there, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one, one item is about use of words. I think the offices we were using, but not in the way we were using previously. So we were getting, I think, charged for cleaning. It wasn't really necessary. But Izzy?
Yeah, so with the, with the cleaning, with the offices, the offices get locked here. So there's definitely not been some services that we would have usually received where we would have to get the doors open, they would come in and do their usual cleaning. So that's what we meant there. In terms of getting offices back to work in the office, we are looking at doing this. The inspector is working with Georgia, I believe, on a risk assessment. We're also going to be doing a survey to staff, asking who wishes to come back. So that we can start implementing that. But it's, it's one of those things, it will take a little time. We are, we do have to consider the fact that this is a shared building. It's used heavily by the police with only two toilets. So there are, it is quite a lot that we need to take into account to make sure that we've got the measures in place to welcome everyone back.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Dunn again?
Yeah, just page eight, 1.43, your officers have continued to contest the ground maintenance charges from Lewis District Council. If you've got an update on that, is that looking positive? Or are you still in negotiations?
Sorry.
Karen?
I've spoken to officers at Lewis District Council and I've written to them. And one of the points that I asked on there was, you know, why did we have to pay our grounds maintenance contract in full when the work wasn't done and the contractor was actually furloughing their staff? They've, their central management team, corporate management team have actually passed all my queries on to other people. And that's the only one I've not heard back from. But I have asked if I can have another meeting with the person that I had a meeting with before next week. So hopefully I'll get an update then.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Karen. Mr Mayor?
Thank you. Councillor Cash?
Could I have you look at 1.22, the, the cost we are paying at the moment for the renting of the building when the offices are not in use? Is there any progress on that? It does seem totally unfair that we should be paying for utility bills and cleaning when in fact we're not using the offices.
Karen?
The finance manager spoke to the estates manager right at the beginning of lockdown. And he said, just a flat no. But we've asked again, I've actually written to the police commissioner and the police constable, I believe it is, Joe Shiner and Katie Bowle. And Joe Shiner has got back to me. But again, she's referred me on to someone else. So it's a waiting game, I'm afraid.
Yes, the chief constable apologised for not being at my, at the civic service. So I might well go back to her to offer her an opportunity to be more helpful. So I think if we're not getting any progress there, perhaps I could write as mayor to the chief constable and see if that would get them more interested. Because again, if we're not getting full services, I mean, yes, we, we, they can't use the space for anything else. But clearly, we're not using utilities, we're not using, you know, we're not, yeah, we're, if we're being, we have to be charged for, for having the space, but all the other things about not using the space, we ought not to be charged for, because there, it's power bill's not being run up. Okay, thank you. Now, just to remind us that this report is for noting and to ratify decisions already made. So we're not making decisions about going forward. We're simply in the, between the, up to page 10, it's, it really is a straightforward summary of what has been done and what's been done by our officers with the delegated authority they have. So this is simply, well, not simply, this is what's happened to date. So does anybody have any, any other queries about the information items or the recommendation itself? Councillor Olivia Honeyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a question on 1.34 on page seven about the beach huts. At what stage do we actually, are we making actually a profit out of the beach huts? You know, we've done, I can't remember the figures because I couldn't find them because I knew it was a couple...
Can I say, yes, we hold this for the next report? Because that's, there's finance specifics in that.
Oh, sorry, it was in this one as well.
Oh, yes, it's a comment here, but I think it'll be better handled in the actual financial update.
Okay, fair enough.
That's okay with you. Councillor Brown?
Yes, I'd like to propose that we accept the note of report and the ratification of the decisions made by the officers.
Okay, we have, so we have a second there. Councillor Webb, you're seconding that? Right, so I think we need a roll call. So we, so we have a, it's proposed and seconded. I thought we'd be asking for those in favour. Are we going to do this by show of hands? Is it a show of hands or a roll?
I can see everyone on my screen today, so I'm happy if you wanted to.
Okay, let's, let's show of hands, those in favour of accepting it. Okay, that's, Georgie in favour, any, any against? Any abstaining? Well, that, that to me is carried. Yes, it's carried. Okay, thank you all. We're now moving forward to item number five, which is the, which is the financial update report, which starts on page 11 of your papers. I think there are, there have been some one or two movements in the last day or so, Karen.
Yes, there is.
Would you like to update us about that?
Yes, I would. First of all, I'd just like to say that forecasting the figures to the end of the year is, is not the easiest thing in the world when we're living in the world that we're living in at the moment. Because actually, you know, since writing this, lockdown measures have changed. And so we've taken sort of a middle ground of what we think will happen and when we think that the main, the main things that affect the amount of money that we're going to have coming in for the next six months are whether or not we can have societies at the golf club, whether the buggies can carry on going out, whether the View can have functions, and whether, we know sort of pretty much now at the moment how many members we've got, which is less than last year. I think it's about 25 less than last year. But we are getting extra money from green fees because we're not having societies. But when it comes to the View, the income's down as well from last year, as well as not being able to have functions. So we don't know when that's going to happen. We don't know when they're going to return. So you can see from my report that at the moment, the way we're forecasting it, we should have a general reserve of about 65,000 at the end of the year. If none of these things happen, if we can't ever have a function again at the View till the end of the year, if we can't ever have a society, it could be as low as minus 85,000. And that's the huge difference. So, and they change weekly, the figures, you know, constantly. As soon as we get more information on anything, we factor it in. As the Chair has said, that we've actually had some developments this week. The first one is the Public Works Loan Board. I applied to the Public Works Loan Board to see if we could have a payment holiday on our loans. I was hoping to be able to pay them back the year after next, but they're not happy with that. They want me paying back next year. So although it is a good thing, all it actually does is defer the payment to next year. So all it does is aid cash flow this year. It means basically that we, you know, it will help us have enough money in the bank in March and February to be able to pay our bills. It's not going to affect the general reserve in any way because we'll have, it'll be a liability at the end of the year. We'll have to pay it next year. If we don't have the money to pay it this year, we'll have to precept for it next year. And to be honest, they've written to me again today asking for something else. It's, it's been a bit of a minefield to try and get them to agree this. And I've not read all that they're asking for now. And I'm still not 100% sure. I need to go back to them whether they've included the last two payments of the year. So it's, it's between 65 and 95,000 pounds, depending on which they've done, is the, is the difference. So it does mean it will aid cash flow and it should mean that we have enough money in the bank at the end of the year to pay everybody. So it is a positive, but not, you know, not, not an end result, if you know what I mean. What they've said to me is, I mean, next year it will, will reintroduce direct debits as normal. And they've said that if we really can't pay next year, come back again. I mean, I think when we first thought we could do this, we all thought it would be added on to the end of the loan. But that's, that's not the case. The second thing is, I've written to, as have many councillors, I've written to the offices at East Sussex County Council and Lewis District Council. And as I say, some of the councillors have written to their counterparts councillors on both councils. And East Sussex County Council have come back and said they really have no money and they can't help. Lewis District Council, my meetings were very, very positive. And we've recently been, been told by one of the, by the MP that Lewis will help us. I've not had that officially in any way. And again, I hope to get clarification on that for next year, for next, next week, sorry, not next year. So I don't know the figures or anything. I mean, I've asked, I've told them we would need between 100 and 250,000. If they agree, it will come back to council for you to agree. It's not, it's not my decision unless we decide to agree in principle and delegate that authority to me. I'm thinking it would be a good idea if we could ask them if, and I know, I found out this is legally possible, for us to have it over three years instead of just paying it back next year. Because again, if we have to pay it back next year, it still means precepting for it next year. So, you know, to preset for the Public Works Loan Board, to preset for the payment to Lewis, to preset for a new general reserve, it's an awful lot in a year. So if we could spread that cost over a few years, I think that would be beneficial. But when I know more details, we'll bring it back to council because it is a full council decision.
Yep, okay, thank you.
In my report, I mentioned we were hoping to get extra money from filming. It's not been quite as good as we thought it would be. But we're still looking to get pretty much confirmed now, another 11 and a half thousand, which is, which is really positive. And there's still six months to go and there's still other interest out there. I think there's another 600, there's 6,000 that's been negotiated on top of that. So that's been a great help, you know. I mean, it's, it's quite a large sum and it's really good because you can use it for revenue. We've also sold three beach huts, which is brilliant. The last one hasn't been paid for yet. So, you know, they still definitely want it, but there are a few issues at their end at the moment, health wise. But, you know, that should be in the pipeline. And again, that's brilliant, you know, I mean, it's about 100,000 pounds. But we can't spend it on wages and gas and electricity and things like that. We can only spend it on capital. So, I mean, it's already been agreed at the last council that any capital expenditure we have will come from that. At the moment, it's the beach hut, not the beach hut, sorry, it's the pump house. The loans we've already paid, the capital element of that will come out of there. And I think that the boiler, the boiler enhancement and the salts will also come out of there. Um, to answer councillor Borman's question, I think it's councillor Borman that asked about the beach huts? Oh, no, it was councillor...
Councillor Honeyman, yeah.
Asked about the beach huts, yeah. My recollection is, and this is, it was, we paid about 20,000 pounds per beach hut. And we've been getting 33,000 pounds. So yes, they are covering their costs.
Can I ask a supplementary question to that one? How many beach huts have been sold in total? And how many are unsold?
I think we've got four. I looked at this yesterday. I think we've got four left and two rented. Is that right? Anybody else?
I think, I, I thought it was five and two, but, yeah, it's the sort of thing that, yeah, I think it's five and two.
Councillor Brown is either waving or signalling five. Yeah, I think he's saying five. We do take the point that, for example, earlier on, Lewis had said to us that they wanted to see us selling assets in order to make a loan possible. But assets, you know, are capital and it doesn't, it doesn't actually help the issues that we're trying to, to cover with, cover with a short term loan. Okay, so who else?
What selling capital assets will do and what selling beach huts will do will afford us the ability to be able to do the projects that we already want to do. So like, for instance, when we've sold the beach huts on all the criteria, and this has been like for three years now, it's said that we're going to build a retaining wall on the seaford. And we haven't. And at the moment, we don't have the money. But it is something with the capital income that we've got that we really can consider later on in the year. I'd still prefer to wait and see how the year goes. But, you know, it is something that we are going to be able to consider now we've sold three, certainly if we sell any more.
And I'm continually being lobbied about the selling Martello toilets. But, and that's a nice introduction to councillor, councillor Dunn. Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, sorry. On page 13, this is for Karen, 2.42, you say that you're in contact with the PWLB. Yes, you gave us an update on that. But it says, we have six loans. I didn't realise we had that many. Can you give a breakdown of what they are?
Yeah, we've actually only, probably from your perspective, councillor Dunn, we've only got two. But why we've got, why we've got six, we've got one for Herdy's House and we've got five for the golf course because we, we drew it down in tranches, not all in one lump. Yeah.
Was it five, was it half a minute, 500,000 a year, was it?
I don't know off the top of my head.
All right, to draw it down, yes, because we can't take it in one lump. Oh, I see.
We drew it down, I think, as and when we needed it. And five, I mean, it was before my time, so I'm not sure. But all I know is we drew it down in five separate lumps.
So that's why it says the six loans rather than, but they're actually the View and Herdy's house. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it's the way Public Works Loan Board do it. They've all got different numbers. So we've got to, I've had to ask for all of them and three, and three of them twice because we pay twice a year.
Right, okay. All right, that's really helpful. Thank you, Karen.
Someone else? Anyone want to signal, they want to make a comment, ask a question? Councillor Ali Hyder? Councillor Hyder?
Yeah, yeah, I'd just like to ask Karen, she said, to sell the beach hut and paying the staff. So how long you can, how long we can carry on next selling thing, paying the staff? Last is you can get, ask for Lewis District Council some loan for maybe three years. And how much interest they're going to charge? Will they charge any interest or interest free it will be?
They will charge us interest, definitely. I don't know how much. We're not even anywhere near that at the moment. I think the only positive thing is that they're, they're very, very unlikely to charge us more than the base rate, which is negligible at the moment. So I don't think it's going to be expensive. But it's a way, if we could do it over three years, it's a way of spreading, spreading the burden to the taxpayer.
And also just to re-emphasise the point that selling beach huts as capital doesn't give us any ability to pay staff as revenue. So the, it doesn't, it's not, it's not, it's not a question of selling the family silver and then having revenue to pay out there. It's, it's apples and pears. They can't, they can't, can't be swapped across.
I didn't quite hear all the question on the beach huts.
That was about whether beach hut income could, could cover staff costs?
No.
No, no, okay.
I've not had a definitive answer of what happened, what would happen if at the end of the year we had money in the bank. But I think a lot, but not that could be spent. But I think quite a lot of councils all over the country, I think a lot of districts and a lot of county councils are in the same boat. They've got capital money, but they don't have revenue money. So there has been talk. Now we've actually lobbied to ask, can, can, because of Covid-19, can we use capital funds for revenue? But it is actually the law. So at the moment, you can't do it.
But into the next agenda item, I think maybe the Assets Working Group may want to think something about how we might be able to use the money that we could, we could generate. But that's, we'll come back to that.
One way you can do it annually, I mean, it is like drip feeding because you could actually, the capital element of the loans can always come from a capital receipt.
Okay, councillor Cash? Councillor Cash?
Looking at 3.6, we're talking about having no functions or anything at the View, especially if we have another Covid situation. I know that at the committee, they decided that we couldn't open in the evening or have functions. I still think it might be worth having some kind of brainstorming group who look down and see if there's some imaginative approach we can adopt to having some functions there. To say we haven't been able to do it in the past and it doesn't work, I accept. I just wonder if this is the time when we've got to relook it and reassess it and think if there's another way of getting an income flow there because it's a major problem for us. And if we spent some time on it and it didn't work, we've wasted a bit of time, but at least we've relooked it. And I think it would be a good idea to do that.
Perhaps that's back to Golf and the View Committee again. Karen signalling to speak.
I was just going to say, Chair, that what has, what has been said at the moment, first of all, it's changed because you can only have six gatherings. So I'm not even sure at the moment. I've not read all the finer points of the detail. I don't think you could do them full stop. I think they're still allowing weddings and funerals. But what they're saying is that because you need to have a one way, one way in and one way out system at the golf, at the View, if you have 20, the maximum people we, we could actually get inside is 25. So that would mean you couldn't have anybody else. So if you have 25 people there at a function, the amount of income you would get from 25 only is less than you would get by opening up the inside and the outside to the general public.
I don't want to discuss it tonight with you, Karen, but I have got an idea of how we might overcome that. I just would like the opportunity just to explore that with you. Because I, I have been in the View where there were more than 25 people. So it's not, because they've, they've been individually booked the tables, yes? And I think there would might be a way of running certain, well, I would quite like to discuss it with you if I may.
Yes.
I think beyond, outside the meeting is a good, good suggestion. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we, we will need to note the contents of the report. But before we do that, are there any other questions? Comments? Didn't see anybody signalling. So would someone like to propose that the contents be noted? Councillor Borman, I think, Councillor Brown, you're willing to second that?
Yep, second.
Okay, let's, I think we'll go for a show of hands on that. Those in favour of noting the contents of this report? Any against? Any abstaining? That's carried. Okay, thank you. Now we're now moving on to the second side of the agenda. So we're not quite finished yet. And we're now onto Agenda Item Six. This is about establishing an Assets Working Group. Izzy, do you want to have any kind of introduction to this?
Yeah, I can do. I mean, it leads on quite nicely from the report that, that Karen tabled. It's, it's just basically to form a working party of councillors with some officer support to review... to review the council's assets and look at where we can maybe look to sell. So that's, that's it really. Obviously, there's a lot in the report.
Okay, and I think because it's worth talking about these, the four recommendations one by one, because they are very different kinds of things. But I think we might take them together at the end. But I think they're worth discussing one at a time. So if you want to, to speak to one of these items, could you say whether you're speaking to one or all four? And perhaps we, we might go through them one by one, but we'll see. I'll open up now to questions and comments. Councillor, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think this is a very good idea. It's something that we need to look at all our assets and work out whether is there any that we need to sell or what can we do with any of them? And so I'd like to put my name forward for the working group.
Okay, always, always good to have volunteers. Councillor Meek?
I just wanted to ask, having taken into account what's just been said, we can't use any of our assets to help our cash flow. What is the idea of assessing and looking at selling assets? I'm confused by that, so.
I see councillor Dunn, but before that, I'll go back to Karen.
I think it's a very good thing to do, especially at a time like this. We should be doing it on a regular basis anyway. Because anything that we don't need or, you know, then we should look to be able to, to sell. But what it would do is it would mean that instead of having to preset next year on the year after and the year after for the projects that you want to do, instead of having to go and have bank grants like for the Martello toilets, things like that, that you could actually afford to do the things that you want to do by selling assets you don't need. It might be that you conclude there aren't any we can sell, but it's still a good thing to review them.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, I would just like to put my, I also would like to put myself forward to go on the group. I'd just like to say that as well. Liz is already, or councillor Borman's, what if he said something?
Any other, councillor Cash?
Could you give us an idea of how many people you would want on that group? Because it, you don't want it too big or too small. If you've got a kind of a number in your mind, Isabel.
I'm going to refer that to Izzy.
And yes, I mean, the answer to that is actually no, because we did talk about there being a number. But it's such a, I don't know, it's such a good activity, if that makes sense. We just thought that it didn't really matter how many were on, were on it. You know, the more the merrier in terms of this particular activity.
Can you, I know this is going to be asking you to guess rather than actually state how much time members might need to commit. Is this a day a week? Is it a day a month? Is this going to be onerous? I'm saying that do people who volunteer for this need to be able to put in quite a lot of time and quite soon?
I think the way that we would see it working at the moment, I mean, there will be officers' time on this. Like we've said, it would be the Projects and Facilities team will be involved in this. So I think the first, the first stage would be being presented with the list of the, of the town council's assets. And also, an officer would have been able to go through and give a bit of an overview on what state that asset is in, what it's for, what, you know. So all of that sort of work, the groundwork will have been done. And then it will be a case of reviewing that and discussing that. So I can't imagine it will be that onerous on councillor time. But it's, it's as much as you want to put into it, if that makes sense. It's a difficult one to put a time on, but most of the groundwork will have been achieved by stuff that we've got in-house here. If that makes sense. I hope that helps.
Okay. Yes, I mean, it is a bit of a hell of a piece of string, but it's, yeah, there's, there is going to be time involved in this. And I think, I think we were saying earlier, a significant amount of reading involved as well. Okay, other questions, comments?
Can I add, Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanted to add, we have had a note from councillor Allraven, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, but she would quite like her name to be put forward as well. Just want to add that to the list.
Yes, and I would be willing to put my name on the list for that as well.
And me.
Anyone else?
Apology, Chair, as well.
Anyone else? Councillor Webb? Councillor, Olivia Honeyman?
No, sorry, I wasn't volunteering.
Oh, well, sorry, councillor. Go on.
I just wanted to clarify with Jean and Sylvia, whether, was Morag did say she wanted to be on the group, didn't she?
I think she did. I think.
Yeah, faithfully, I think, yeah, I think she did mention it.
That's right. I just wanted to check with you two before we volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can establish the working group, but we can confirm membership beyond the meetings. Once we've got a list, we can actually make sure people haven't reconsidered or been misstated. So once we have, once we have an open list, I think we're not binding people into it. But we just, we'd confirm that as a series of emails. Anyone else either want to volunteer for the group or ask comments about these four recommendations? Make comments on the four recommendations. I see Karen wanting to speak.
Can I just make a comment, Chair, that you've got eight people on it now? I think that's quite a good number, actually. I think, you know, too, too many people, too many different opinions, but, you know, eight's quite a nice number. It's just a comment. It's just my, my thoughts on it.
I think eight out of 20 is quite a good representation, so.
I personally don't know councillors well enough to know what their experience is. But I think some of you have been councillors for quite a while now. So, you know, different experiences bringing to the working group is a good thing. You know, people who, who know more about the assets.
Yes, yeah, I think that's, good to people who have long experience. Isabel?
I'm just going to put the names in the comment box just to clarify. They're just, should be in there now. Just double checking for spelling mistakes there. Should have done that before I hit go, but.
Yes, so everybody is agreeing that those are the names, that your names have not been put forward accidentally and that everybody is in there and wants to be in there? Okay, we go with that. Yeah, that's, yes, okay. So I think in that case, we can begin to go through these recommendations because we've actually almost agreed item one by naming the list. Does anyone want to propose we take all four together or should we go through them one by one? I'm suggesting one by one, but nobody's suggesting all four. Let's go for one. Let's go for recommendation one, to establish a working group to review the town council's assets consisting of ten councillors with the support of council officers. Someone propose that?
Yes.
Okay, so Cash, someone second that. Okay, councillor Borman. Those in favour, show of hands? Any against? Any abstentions? I think I see two people not voting, but not abstaining either. But anyway, it's carried. So that's, item one is carried, right. Number, recommendation two, to note that the working group need not co-op further members from outside the town council at this stage of the process to basically to confirm this is a, a group of Seaford Town Council officers and members. Someone propose that?
I'd prefer to accept that.
Right, councillor Brown and councillor Edson to second that. Okay, those in favour? Any against? Any abstaining? That's carried. Now, number three, to agree the terms of reference of the working group as to review the town council's portfolio of assets with the support of town council officers and make recommendations back to full council on any assets which the group feels the town council should carry out a feasibility study into the possibility of disposing of. So I think that's an important chain of events that the working group isn't about just recommend selling assets. Working group is if, if there are assets that could be sold, the step is the feasibility study. And beyond that, the possibility of disposing. So I think creating the group doesn't commit us to selling assets, though it might. Councillor Brown signalling to speak?
Yes, Chair, thank you very much. I think we ought to put a timescale on for the first report. Otherwise, it could go on for months and months and we won't get any rep.
Yes, good thought. Isabel, do you think a month to report, six weeks to report? It's got to come into the budget cycle, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we saw this sort of, then sort of forming part of the budgeting process. So I'm just looking at Georgia because I haven't got my meetings calendar in front of me. But I would assume that there's a meeting to discuss the, yeah, in November, is there?
January, that's the final budget setting.
The only other thing we do have is potentially a council meeting on Tuesday, the 10th of November, which is to do with the town clerk recruitment process. So it could be that that meeting could be kind of a dual purpose meeting. And that's probably quite a nice timescale because we'd need the working group report at least two weeks before the agenda, before the meeting date, sorry. So that would give the working group five, six weeks to pull together that initial report, which I think, I don't think you could do much less than that. I think any less than that. And it would be a struggle to make sure it's being done thoroughly.
I think even at that, you might consider you might need to have a, a meeting every week.
So, yeah, so councillor Brown?
Yes, I'd like to propose that we add that on to the recommendation.
To report to the November meeting. Councillor Honeyman, Richard Honeyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a clarification about who would actually do the feasibility study. Could that be external people, internal, or would it depend on what, which bit you may be interested in? Thank you.
Izzy?
And I think, yeah, I think we will take that as the next stage. We need to look at what it is we're looking to do. If it's something that we can do in-house, we would, we would provide an officer. If it's someone, we'd, we'd be needing to co-op someone on to the working group to do that. That would be the sort of thing that would be in the report to full council.
So with that proviso, that the, the working group will report to the November council meeting, are we ready to put that to the, to be voted on? Yes. Okay, someone proposed that. Item three amended, simply to have report to the November council meeting. Councillor Borman, I think proposes that. Someone second that. Councillor Argent. Okay, those in favour? Those in favour? Okay, thank you. Any against? Any abstaining? That's carried. Okay, now we're each item four, recommendation four, to request nominations to appoint a chair of the working group at this early stage to enable the group to make arrangements for its first meeting as soon as possible. So of the eight, who, who wants to volunteer? I see councillor Dunn speaking, he wanted to speak.
Yeah, I would like to nominate yourself, councillor Reed, Mr Mayor. I'd like to nominate you to be Chair, if you don't mind.
I thought you were about to volunteer yourself at that stage.
No, 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 no.
Councillor Cash?
I'd like to second that.
Oh dear, there's been no, there's been no preparation of this beyond the meeting, has there? Does any, would anybody else like to chair this? Suddenly, oh, councillor Borman would like to.
I'm quite happy to put my name forward to chair it, if you wish as well.
Okay, that's two, 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 so it's two for Chair. So I think we just need to, we need to vote. I think councillor Cash, if you take over the chair at this point, the basis is, I wouldn't be chairing this for myself. So the decision is between councillor Borman and councillor Reed. Councillor Cash?
Sorry, Mayor, sorry. It's just the proposal on the table at the moment is, is yourself. Would be, that would be the way it's done. So the proposal at the moment is that, and so we would vote on that first.
Okay, is it, is it proper for me to still to be in the chair at this point while doing this?
Yes. Yeah, the casting vote as well.
Okay, so the proposal is that the mayor or councillor Reed is, becomes, is appointed Chair of the working group. So those in favour? Okay, those against? Any abstaining? I nearly did. Right, I declare, I declare that I've been voted in as Chair of the working group. Thank you, friends.
And colleagues.
And colleagues. Okay. So that means that the four recommendations of the Agenda Item Six and the, this report 5320 are now all carried. That then brings us to the end of the agenda.
One more question, please.
Ah, sorry, councillor Brown?
Could I ask Isabel, I think we've been using our risk assessment list as a, as a base for putting this list of assets together?
Oh, I believe it was an asset register, Chair. The asset register will be used.
Well, it's already there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Use it as a base. So we've got a starter.
I could answer that with a little bit more information if you'd like. Sorry, we discussed it at CMT this week. And what we're doing is, like you say, we're using the fixed asset register as a base. But we just want to get a bit more information with that and then also cross-reference it with a map. And then the plan was just we could hand this over to the working group and that should give you enough information just to kind of be able to get going with the review process. So our aim is to have that done hopefully kind of within the next week or as soon as possible, given the tight timeline.
Okay.
Set a date for the first meeting?
Yes.
Sorry, I, I think if you don't mind, Mayor, sorry. If we've got the, it's the other officers that would be involved in this. So I think if you don't mind that we may be, I mean, they'll be in contact with the newly elected Chair of that working group to, to get that first date in place as soon as possible.
Yeah, good point. If we need, as we need officers there, we've got to make sure we can pick a date, they are available. So, yeah, I take councillor Brown's point. I think we convened the first meeting as soon as is conveniently possible. And we do that by comparing diaries, I think. Because, yeah, this would have to be a Zoom meeting, so we could compare diaries and then set a Zoom meeting on that basis, but soon. Okay, councillor Dunn?
Yeah, can I just check that, will this be the night evening meetings or are we looking at days or we don't know yet?
We, we don't know yet, sorry.
Don't know. Right, it's on what's available. Okay, thank you.
And I think that we just need to go through the list to see, for example, if, I, I don't think the Morag would ever be available for a daytime meeting, for example. So we'd have to work out between the members of the group and the officers, whether it's a late afternoon meeting, early evening. I wouldn't want to hold meetings as late as this on the basis it keeps officers in late. So if we can have something, if possible, at the end of a working day, say. But I think we'll need to negotiate the time of the meetings and the frequency as, as soon as we can beyond this meeting. So I think that is the end of the agenda. So the meeting is closed.